Okay, welcome to those that have joined us from home as well as especially those that have joined us here in city council chambers tonight. This is a meeting of the Pecosin City Council for Monday, June 27th. If we could all please rise, I'll lead you in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and for the many blessings we have received in our city. As we deliberate the issues before us, we ask for a portion of your wisdom that we do the best service to those that we serve. We ask for a blessing as well for those that serve in our armed services, especially those in foreign lands as they protect all of us while we sleep safely here at the United States. And we ask for your comfort and your presence with our public safety personnel and their families while they spend time away from them protecting all of us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna be a little bumpy tonight. If you haven't noticed yet, council has new microphones. The other ones were not working so well, we have to actually hold the button while we talk. So there will be times when we have to remind each other to do that. I think we've taken that away from the podium there, so when people address us, they won't have to hold that mic. But if we forget something, or as I had to sit back down just to let everybody know what we're doing, that's the reason. I've got a number of special presentations this evening. The first is Based Our Home and Amanda Philbeck. If you can join me up there, I'll do that thing, the presentation to you. We also have an introduction of some new interns. We have a presentation from Davenport and Company on our bond rating results and the outcome of those. And then a brief by Charity Gavazza on the marketing opportunities within the city of Pecosin. So I'll join over there at the podium and get on with this. All right, Amanda, what I want to present you with, and just for the citizens that know, Based Our Home is basically a home that has taken the challenge to be environmentally friendly to our city and to our nation. And with that, there's a checklist of things that basically you sign up to do. And Amanda and her family have done that, and I think it's really a great process, especially for you, young lady, because you'll probably get all the chores associated with it. But we have basically a sign, small kit, for you to display in front of your house. And we thank you for doing that and for being a model to our other citizens in doing that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Amanda.
Can I shake your hand? Yep.
Okay, Randy, you want to introduce the new interns?
Thanks, sir. This evening, it's a pleasure to introduce two of our summer interns to you. The first is Will Ziegler. Stand up, Will. You'll be hearing more from Will and about Will when Charity speaks. But Will is a student at Hampton Sydney, and he is doing fantastic work, and he is working with us in economic development. And some of the things that you'll see this evening are direct byproducts of his work. And our other intern, as I continue to punch out, trying to get every university in Virginia at one point, happy to say, our other intern for the summer, I don't really choose that way, but I'm glad when I get to do it. Is Kyle Cherry. Please stand up, Kyle. Kyle is going to school at Randolph Macon, and he is a political science major with the minors in mathematics and economics, which tells you that he probably doesn't have much free time. Since he is nominally working out of the city manager's office, but so far, the most significant things that he's done with us is important work with the assessor's office and also with Public Works and with Jerry and his team. And Kyle is one of the people that will be assisting us in the next week or so in the distribution of all the door hangers that Mr. Kago was speaking about. We're happy to have both of them, and we hope that we can help them along in their educational endeavor and that every once in a while, we can spark an interest in local government service along the way. So we're thankful to have you both.
Hey, thank you. And Kyle and Will, thank you all for both serving with us this summer. Looking forward to it. I've seen some of the outcome of your work so far, and I know that Charity's interested in telling us about a lot of that. But the project that we just talked about right before this, Kyle, will be right up your alley. And I'm just glad that you're not working with Jerry taking care of the ditches, but instead telling us how to take care of our stuff. But welcome to you both, and thank you for your service. Next is Mr. Sanderson from Davenport and Company. I think this is an important thing that the citizens should understand. Basically, Davenport and Company is our financial advisors for the city of Pecosin. They want to, we participated with them, basically, in trying to set ourselves up for the future and as well as taking advantage of being a good financial steward of the taxpayers' money. Mr. Sanderson's gonna talk about the outcome of that, but what's important for you to realize is that anything that he's talking about in terms of savings are your tax dollars. Okay? Very important to understand the magnitude of why we think things like that are important and as well, why we do this now, thinking 10 years down the road for when we may do the middle school. Okay? Why that bond rating would be important to us. So Mr. Sanderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Wheeler. Again, Jimmy Sanderson with Davenport and Company. It's a pleasure to be with you today. Griffin Moore, who played an integral role in this process as well, is gonna hand out a presentation, and we'll walk through it with you. If you'll flip over to page one, again, as the mayor mentioned, we're your financial advisor and work with the city related to capital projects, refunding, and in particular, interaction with the national credit rating agencies. And some of the things that we also monitor, again, are any opportunities to reduce our debt service. I mean, it's important to take advantage of those opportunities when you can. The interest rate environment has been one that's been in your favor over the last few years, and in particular, frankly, over the last few months. And that's exactly what took place over the last six months of time. Us, along with city staff, identified some refunding candidates. There was an opportunity there also to take care of some small new money capital needs as well while we were in the markets, sort of some economies of scale to add that, and that's exactly what we did. And ultimately, what we want to walk through here is what the results of that were, both from a credit perspective, but also from your ultimate borrowing and your savings. If you flip over to page two, again, we went to two of the national credit rating agencies, Moody's and Standard and Poor's. And part of that process is to go through what's going on really in the city, what your financial health looks like, what the future looks like for the city. And the results were very good for you. Moody's, a rating agency which is, again, one of the two that we have, upgraded the city from the AA3 category to the AA2. And we're gonna show you in a second really what that means and where it puts you in the overall process. And Standard and Poor's affirmed your AAA rating, which, again, is the highest credit rating that you can have. And frankly, given today, you're now rated higher than the United Kingdom. They were downgraded by S&amp;P today to AA from AAA. So in all seriousness, that's the type of, what's going on over there are the types of things that rating agencies are gonna look at, looking forward in the future to see how you're gonna react to those types of things. The last point there is that's the fourth rating upgrade that we've received, we, the city, from S&amp;P and Moody's since 2010. So since 2010, you have been in the eyes of the rating agency, moving in the right direction. Flip over to page three. Again, this gives you a sense of where those ratings are. And just to give you, orient you a little bit, in the middle there, we've got Moody's and S&amp;P, and the highest rating that you can get is the AAA rating. And you'll see that S&amp;P, it's highlighted in green, that's where S&amp;P has you. And Moody's has you now in the AA2 category there in the left column, and that is your new rating there. And you're really, there's only one category between AAA and where you are from Moody's perspective. So that's all very good. And again, you can see here where you've moved up. The yellow are the ratings that you had, the initial ratings that was going back to 2010. And consistently, the city has put themselves in a good position to move up the credit ratings. Ultimately, what that does is give you a better interest rate, meaning a lower interest rate when you go into the market and you're borrowing money. So let's flip over to page four. And I thought I'd really just read two of the comments that the rating agencies put in their write-ups. This is from Moody's. There's a number of things in here, but the first highlight really hits it. "The upgrade to AA2 reflects the city's ability to maintain structurally balanced operation and add to reserves and liquidity through conservative management practices as well as continued improvement in the performance of its utility fund, eliminating the need for general fund support." So the things that the rating agencies are gonna look at are, do you operate from an operating financially stable budget? Are you contributing to your reserves to take care of things down the road? And is your utility fund self-supporting? And you've done a good job of that, and that's predominantly why you were upgraded to AA2. Flip over to page five, and this is from S&amp;P, again, who already have you at that very highest rating level. And I'll read the quote at the bottom there. "The stable outlook reflects S&amp;P's opinion of Pecosin's affluent residential property tax base that directly participates in the robust Hampton Roads economy. The outlook also reflects our expectation that Pecosin will likely maintain its very strong budgetary flexibility and very strong liquidity supported by very strong management." So the use of the word "vary" in there is done purposefully. They don't add words without meaning. So they look at you as having some very strong characteristics of a very highly rated locality. So let's flip over to page six, and then here we'll get into really the meat of the transaction that took place. The two transactions that you had outstanding, Series 2010 and 2011, were the specific transactions. We looked at refunding, and you can see there in the middle of the original, for example, the 2010 bonds, of the original 15.3 million that was issued, there's 14 million outstanding. All goes to the fact that you've been paying down your debt. Of that, approximately 11.8 million was callable. The average interest rate on those bonds was 4.7%. The next line is the 2011 B, is a little bit smaller transaction. Ultimately, we looked at refunding 3.2 million of those bonds, and they carried an interest rate of 2.98%. If you average those together, that was an interest rate of 4.36%. So that's what your current debt service that you were paying was based off of. Flip to the next page, page seven. "The way we went through this process was to do a competitive sale. It's a process where we put together a package for underwriters to bid on our bonds and ultimately reward and award the bonds to whoever provides us the lowest true interest cost." So whoever's gonna give us the lowest cost of funds is who we'll award the bonds to. And you were very well received in the market. Ultimately, you received nine bids from underwriters, and this is the list of those that bid on your bonds. Janie provided the lowest TIC for you, and that's who we awarded the bonds to. Frankly, we don't care who it is, as long as they're going to fulfill their end of obligation. But in this case, it's Janie, and they provided you the results that we're gonna talk about here in a second. So flip to page eight, and ultimately, here's what the refunding results provided. The bottom line of it is really over on the right. And by doing the refunding transaction, again, taking all costs into account, you always wanna look at those things when you're doing a transaction like this, your overall savings was $1.4 million that you've reduced your debt service from before to after the transaction. And when you looked at it from an interest rate perspective, the 4.36% interest rate that we talked about a moment ago was reduced to an all-in, and that's the second bullet right there on the left, an all-in true interest cost, which, again, takes into effect all of the costs associated with it, to 1.8%. So you were able to borrow going out to 2029 at 1.8%. It's a great result. Congratulations on that. And when we look at a refunding, the other thing that we look at is, they may have talked to you about this before, is what's the percentage on a net present value basis? In this case, it was in excess of 8.6%. The industry standard, you look for at least a 3% number, and so you're in excess of three times that. So it was a great, great result for the city of Pecosin. And we flip over to the last page. One of the things we wanted to give you a sense of is what that meant to your overall debt service structure, even adding and taking care of some of the new money needs that you had. And what that is shown over on the right graphically in the middle there, where you see even adding the 700-plus thousand of additional capital, your overall debt service was able to be reduced going forward. And that's gonna be, the mayor pointed in the future, what that does is it helps you when you look at things that you have in the future, you're reducing your debt service, and it gives you what we talk about as debt capacity and affordability going forward. So, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Manager, that's the extent of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Any questions, council? I think we're all pleased with the results, and let me personally thank you all as Davenport and Company, as our financial advisors. I see that, you know, I've been reading a lot about you all in the paper lately, dealing with Richmond. And I'm happy to deal with you on the side that we get to deal with, so, from a strong financial position. But your basically advice since 2010, and probably, and most likely before, has taken us to a point where we're very pleased, your recommendations on how to shore up our finances, to make sure that we got credit for being a strong financial city. We've taken advantage of those, and because we've taken advantage of those, we've gotten the results. And that basically all comes from the advice that we've gotten from Davenport. So when I talk about money well spent, your financial advice is one of those things that I talk about. So thank you very much, and please pass that back to your company as well.
I will. Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much. We enjoy working with the city, I know, and, again, your results speak for themselves, really. So, thank you.
Okay, next is Charity. You're gonna talk to us about marketing opportunities, a quick PowerPoint presentation?
That is the goal here. It'd probably help if I could have just those lights right in front of here off, so that people can see it. Mayor, city council, everyone here, I so appreciate the opportunity to come speak to you. It's been a little while, so I always appreciate this opportunity. But although 2015 and 16 was a time period where we had a lot of preparations going on, it wasn't the time when we actually had a lot of new businesses opening. But there are some really interesting, intriguing plans in the work coming down the pike, so hopefully, next year or so, we'll be able to talk more about some of those things. But we have had some opportunities to have some openings. So the Pecosin Secret Lair held a ribbon cutting, and they do, if anyone isn't, you wouldn't necessarily know they're there unless you're interested in comic books. So it's over the building by the Pecosin Pharmacy. It's upstairs, just so that you know where it is. And they deal comic books, and they have magic events, which I guess you probably have to be a young adult to really know much about that, but they have events going on regarding that on Friday nights. But something that I think everyone should just go in and see, just for the amazing job that they've done, let's see. What am I doing wrong here? Ah, there we go. Is the, I'm sure everyone at some point in time has been in that building that has housed a number of different businesses and situations over the year, but it is completely redone. And if you haven't been in there, you definitely want to go see it. It's beautiful. It's the La Bella Salon and Day Spa, and they offer everything. Cassie Bates has been in the salon in business for 17 years before fulfilling this vision of hers to have her own salon. She's a medical esthetician, so she does facials, they do massage, they do hair, they do nails, they do a very wide variety, makeup, they do a wide variety of things there. And it's just an interesting place to see, even for somebody who's not interested in that, to go in and see that beautiful building that's been redone. Also, not every business is good at, or has the opportunity or interest, for whatever reason, in having a ribbon cutting. So we also have a new Verizon store. Bull Island BBQ is open again down at Messick Point. Progressive Industrial is Jerry Bates. He is in the strip center behind there. He is actually the one who did all the work. It's Cassie's husband who did the work on that building, and he's also doing the work in his space. PN Nail Splaw opened coming soon, Tag Time, Brad Drummond. Fountain of Pecosin is gonna have several businesses with Bob, opening pretty soon. I think everyone's excited about the Crab Cake House returning. That should happen, soft opening any day probably, and sometime in July, likely to have another ribbon cutting. And a number of other businesses that we are working together with at this time. I did want to tell you about, this is one of the opportunities that we're talking about, a marketing opportunity. Everyone has stopped at some time or another and traveling through the state at one of the Virginia Welcome Centers off of this interstate highway. And this is one of those, and you see the big love sign in front of it? It's an opportunity to do something like that. Every city who has an interest has developed their own version of the, you know, the Virginia For Lovers, very successful, one of the most successful campaigns ever, and they've done a number of different variations on this theme. Here's a number of them, from corn to train stations to whatever their logo is, or whatever their city represents. One of my favorites being in the lower middle is Veritas Winery. That has created 20-plus feet in the air. It's a huge sign, and it's made all out of corks. So it shows you a lot of different variety of things that you can do to create a unique sign. I would love to see us do a unique sign representing Pecosin. I've talked about it for some time. It does, it takes an effort to pull the resources together. However, monetarily, the Virginia Tourism Corporation is willing to refund us 1,500, up to $1,500 of expenses, pre-approved expenses to construct a sign for Pecosin. I'm not exactly certain what that would be. I would imagine it would have something to do with water and boats and, you know, a variety of things that represent Pecosin. But I think it'd be very interesting to put something together, and these are the parameters for doing this. You know, it has to be permanent, they want it to incorporate local, regional, like we've discussed. We're responsible for maintaining it and taking care of it, and it should re, because they're funding it, they want it to remain in place for a minimum of a year after its placement, you know, its placement wherever it goes. And if city council wishes to pursue this, we would probably have, this would be one of Will's assignments. And Will, you're welcome to come join me up here as we talk about this. But after the presentation, if you all would like us to pursue this, we would put Will on it. Like, it has to be written, an application has to be written and pre-approved. We'd like to find an organization in the city to work with us, because it's actually physically constructed, and get the materials for it. Need to get an approved location, and basically approve what it's gonna look like, you know, how it best represents our city. So this is the marketing opportunity that we're talking about, and it could be one of Will's functions for the summer, one of his projects. And I think it'd be a fun one.
Very much so.
Also, along our marketing line, I hope everybody in the city, really, has downloaded the app on their smartphone. And we've put a lot of effort toward having this app. It's very unique, it's something big cities would do. Ours is equivalent of a big city. It's really a quality app, and I would like to take this time to have everyone in the viewing audience and in this room to make sure to download it and utilize it. We are working hard, and Will's been working with a lot of our businesses in Pecosin, trying to get them to make sure their information is correct on the app, and put specials. It has the opportunity, like coupons, basically. You call it coupon or a promotion of some kind, a special, so that people will want to have the app, because in order to get the special, you're gonna have to have that app and find out what's going on in the city so that you use it. So we're really encouraging that. And along that line, Two Ritter, myself, Dave, have gone to the different businesses. You've probably noticed these stickers, the Klingons in the windows everywhere you go. I hope. If there's someplace that we've missed, please tell us, because we worked hard up and down putting stickers on every single window that we could find. And at the same time, the flags were out in the street, the same logo. So we're really promoting that Pecosin is the place, we're promoting the app, and we'd like to have this app be something special that helps promote our businesses and helps promote Pecosin with information about where to go. So we've been working with that. And then here's Will, who's, he's our intern for the summer, Hampton Sydney, major in economics, minor in public service, and a local Pecosin family from, he graduated from Pecosin High School, so he's like the perfect intern for us. I mean, if we were to go out and decide on an intern, it'd be one of the many colleges, like our city manager said, we're trying to hit all the different colleges and somebody from Pecosin, so with the interest and knowledge of Pecosin. But along with, when Will's been going around talking to these companies and getting them on the app, we also have been doing a radio promotion. And listen, what days this week are starting?
Starts Wednesday morning.
Wednesday and drive time, Wednesday and Friday. And then for several weeks, we're gonna have radio spots. The radio station came to us, 99.1, which, by the way, has music appropriate for the age group of most of us in here. It's really a fun station to listen to, and...
I apologize for her.
But it's a great station, and during drive time, morning and evening, we're gonna put these radio ads on. And they're very cute, they're done. Will wrote it, and with help from Gretchen and Dave and myself, we all got together and put this together. So it's, anyway, it's a lot of fun, and it's something different. And this is one of the first projects that Will's had the opportunity to work on, and you definitely want to listen to it. And the last thing I'd like to mention is another opportunity is, I don't, hopefully, because I have mentioned it every year, but this is the fifth year for Start Peninsula. There's also a Start Norfolk. It's the local, if I may say, Shark Tank. It's an entrepreneurial-type program that rewards the entrepreneurs with a new concept, with cash prizes, space in the incubator, mentoring, and it's a whole weekend of time where they really focus on trying to help them get their business plan put together, come up with connections, come up with ideas, and make something so they're actually ready to hit the road running and put, you know, to take a dream and turn it into a reality. So this is an opportunity that I'd like to, I'd like to request everybody who's listening to this, whether at home or here, to think about who in Pecosin we can help get started. Because I know with NASA engineers and scientists and retired NASA and Langley people, that we have a lot of brain power and a lot of ability to put something like this together. This is one of the techniques for economic development across the nation and further, where people are really trying to promote entrepreneurism. And there's a lot of opportunities. Start's just one thing. We'd also like to gather people in the city. If there's enough people, they feed off of each other. They have an idea, and they go, "Oh, did you know about this? Or you can do this kind of website?" These type ideas feed off of each other, and it really helps. So we would love to promote this in the city. We'd like to use this opportunity, and I would love to hear from anyone. We've had, I've had a number of people who have contacted us recently, and we've helped them make connections for business plan writing through Thomas Nelson Workforce Center. I've had several people do that through the state, who's provided SBA, small business funding, through finding the right location. People are moving out, and I'm aware of it, and put people together. There's, a lot of things can happen, but they do need to call and let us know, and that's what we're here for. So we'd love the chance to do that. And I appreciate the opportunity to come speak to you all this evening. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. We appreciate y'all coming to speak to us as well. We're very excited about what the Economic Development Department has been doing. George, we look forward to working with you, see if you can find 106.1, I'm sorry, Will. Sorry. Will, see if you can find 106.1, since they seem to have a radio tower back here. See if they'll come see us. Okay? But besides listening to that one station, Randy, you listened to that, don't you?
99.1?
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely.
It's to your liking, okay. No, but thank you, thank you for everything that you're going to do for us this summer. Next item on the agenda this evening is an audience for visitors. If you're here to speak about the public hearing on the Fountain of Pecosin, please wait until we actually have that public hearing. But if somebody else would like to address council on any other subject, please, now is that time. is that time. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask council for approval of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the minutes of a regular meeting of May 23, 2016.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded, that we approve, that we approve the minutes. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford. Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aha.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Very well. And then the next item on the agenda is a public hearing. The public hearing is about concerning the Fountains of Pecosin, and this is a modification of the existing conditional use permit.
Kevin Wein will present for staff, which is a very narrow, but I think important, expansion of an existing CUP.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Wheeler. As you may recall, many of you were here at this time, but back in May of 2012, we were approached by Mr. Bob Moses and the Fountains of Pecosin LLC for actually three land use applications on property located behind the Langley Federal Credit Union Building and just south of the Pecosin Common Shopping Center, the Food Lion Shopping Center. Those land use applications included a comp plan amendment, which changed the land use designation from, actually two of the parcels, from general commercial to village commercial. Additionally, a rezoning of those two parcels, one which I believe was B2, and one which was general commercial to village commercial. And then lastly, a conditional use permit. That conditional use permit was so that the top floors, the third floors in this case, could be utilized for residential dwellings. As I mentioned, the property's located off of Alpha Street, and the reason we are here this evening is because in that original conditional use permit, the original conditional use permit that allows him that third floor of residential, that is set to expire in a year, actually, in May of 2017. And right now, there's one building under construction, there are two more buildings that are almost exactly the same as the one going up, that are proposed as a part of that original conditional use permit. The applicant does not believe he can complete the entire development within a year's time, and is asking for an extension. You can see the, the property here, it's almost flag-shaped, wraps around a portion of the Economic Development Authority's pond, and that's the site we're talking about. Building one is called Phase One, and the next two buildings, Buildings Two and Three, are going to be constructed under Phase Two. He's had a site plan approved for all phases. However, the building permit has not yet been submitted for Buildings Two and Three. As we currently stand, the building inspector conducted a, an inspection of the building under construction sometime last week, and indicated that the residential units, eight of which will be in this building, are about 90% complete. The commercial, a little further behind, about 80%, and the site itself, about 80% complete. So we're, we're close to getting to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. The, it's all zoned village commercial, and that aligns with that zoning, the rezoning request back in 2012. So this would take a minor modification of the existing conditions, particularly Condition Four, which stipulated that he had within five years from the issuance of that original permit to finish and fully operate the development. As such, we, last week at the Planning Commission, they considered the request, and had granted an additional two years. So he has a year, about 11 months now, existing on that existing conditional use permit, by granting him an additional two years and extending it by June 27, 2019. That would allow about three years from now to have the development up and running. As I said, the Planning Commission met and discussed this item last week, and they have recommended its approval, that extension to June 27, 2019, by a vote of seven to zero. That concludes my presentation, and I can certainly address any concerns or comments you have.
Any questions, council? Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
I'll open the public hearing on this matter. Again, this is a, a public hearing on the Fountains of Pecosin. It looks like a extension of the time to, to the third floors on those. Does anybody want to speak on that subject? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for consideration by council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving a modification of an existing conditional use permit for the mixed-use development located at 200 Fountains Lane, Pecosin Tax Matt, parcel number 27100004.
Okay, motion made and seconded by Councilman Vernal. Questions or comments? Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, very well. First item under New Businesses, a resolution making appointments to the Workforce Development Consortium and Library Advisory Board. Somebody prepared with a motion?
Mr. Herbert Green to the Workforce Development, and as I said, I think the, the second appointment needs, has pending some other action, so I would just make that particular recommendation at this time.
Okay, motion made and seconded, we approve that nomination with the name of Councilman Green inserted, and postpone the other one until a future date. Questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt. Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much, council. Next item under New Businesses, a resolution adopting the Purchasing Manual and Appendix. This will be a riveting discussion. Randy, would you like to lead this?
You know, I would just defer to Teresa, she's worked real hard on this. I would note, as, as she noted in her memo to you all, we had forwarded a, a draft of this document to you approximately a month ago, to give you a chance to read it, because it's not a small thing, easily digestible over a weekend. And would point out, as she did, the last time this manual was updated was 2007. With that, Teresa, if you could come forward and briefly summarize essentially the, the elements raised in your second and third paragraph, as well as answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the Purchasing Manual, like Mr. Wheeler said, was adopted in 1999, the latest revision was in 2007. We spent a year-long process, starting actually with our intern last year, and keeping in mind the overall objectives and proceed, overall objectives of the procedures and policy, the integrity of all the procedures, providing financial and internal controls over expenditures, delegating authority when possible and prudent, promoting administrative efficiency, and complying with the requirements of the Virginia Public Procurement Act. We also solicited suggestions from each department, and tried to incorporate those where we could. The Virginia Public Procurement Act allows for localities to specify their own limits and processes for making small purchases. The state considers small purchases anything under $100,000 for goods and services, and under $60,000 for what they call professional services. With the objectives in mind, and the limits set by the Virginia Public Procurement Act, we recommend setting our limits to $50,000 for formal solicitations for both purchases of goods and services, as well as professional services, and then any contracts greater than $100,000 coming to council for formal approval. We added some standard forms, expanded on some definitions, and some other, other procedures within the manual. So I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions, Teresa? Okay, thank you, Teresa. All right, seeing none, I'll ask somebody from councils willing to move this item forward.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution adopting revisions to the City of Pecosin's purchasing procedures manual, and I highly recommend this reading for anybody suffering from insomnia.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded, that, that we pass this out to, to, at the next meeting for the audience to read. But, so, motion made and seconded, we move forward with this revised purchasing manual. Any final questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item on the New Businesses, a resolution approving the addition of a student representative to Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
Mayor, Mr. Ziegler is here on behalf of the Parks and Rec Board. May I give him an opportunity to come forward?
Good evening.
Local government service obviously runs in the family.
That's, that's the bill I was talking about earlier.
I think you said George. Good evening, members of council. I'm Bill Ziegler, vice chairman of Parks and Rec. We have selected a young lady to be our student representative. Her name is Martha Chiopazi. She has participated in Parks and Rec programs throughout her residence in Pecosin, and we ask you to approve her nomination as student representative to our, our committee.
Okay, thank you very much. Council, is there a motion?
Well, I have a question first. We're not approving the student, we're simply approving the slot for the Parks and Recs Board to put a student in, is that correct? Well, that's why I'm asking the question. A school board has a student rep that we don't, you know, we, we just approve a slot. And I, I would prefer Parks and Recs Board to select their own person rather than, than us do it for them.
Their bylaws, but you approve the Park and Rec.
So each one by name?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so, I, I think, I think the suggestion of Vice Mayor is good for tonight. Let's move forward, and, and do as Parks and Rec has asked us to do. And then we should probably revisit the bylaws and see if they can do this self-appointed next time. So is there a motion on this?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution appointing a student representative to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board with the name of Martha Chiopazi, inserted.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded, we move forward with this. Final questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. Final item under New Businesses is a resolution designating the FOIA officers for the City of Pecosin, and that is the Freedom of Information Act. Is somebody prepared with a motion on that?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution designating FOIA Freedom of Information Act officers for the City of Pecosin with the following names inserted, Ms. Judy Wiggins, Victoria Diggs, and Clifford Bowen.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded, we approve that, those folks to be our officers for any Freedom of Information Act requests. Final questions or comments, council? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aha.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, next item is comments of the city manager. Randy, you got anything for us this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of things. I'm not sure if Charity hit, hit this in her verbal comments, it was certainly up on the screen, but we are anticipating any day now to be a public announcement for the, for the business that will be relocating into the space previously occupied by the Briar Patch. That's, that's very, very close. And also, just for the public, the new code changes that require localities designate FOIA officers, I would just note, constitutional officers are treated as their own unit under the code, so in addition to the officers named by council, the commissioner of, of the revenue and, and the treasurer are the designated FOIA officers for their individual constitutional offices. That's all I have, sir.
Okay, thank you. Comments of council? I'll start with you, Dr. Vernal.
Every, every week when we get the weekly report of various activities in the city, I am amazed by the amount of responses that the police department are called upon. And I got thinking about it, you know, it would be helpful if we got some sort of a report on the number of ambulance calls, and fire, or rescue, or whatever. I think it would be helpful for us to have a better understanding of just what all of our firemen and EMTs are, are, the workload is, and how often they have to go out to a variety of events. So I'd like to see if we could do something like that.
That's absolutely no problem. I get that every week, and I will be glad to include it and report to you. Councilman Green?
Mr. Mayor, just one, the food bank distribution is tomorrow at the old city hall from 10:00 to 1:00. The Pecosin Lions Club is hosting it, hosting it this month, and they always bring extra food that they have collected over several months, so we always look forward to their being there, and we hope you'll all come out. Thank you.
Councilman Ayer?
Just would like to thank all the speakers this evening, and also welcome again Will and Kyle. We appreciate your services, and hopefully you'll get a lot out of this. Thank you.
Bud?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate Amanda Philbeck on winning the Bay Star Homes Award, and welcome our new interns, Will Ziegler and Kyle Cherry. And also pass along some information, we, at least I've had a number of phone calls and comments relative to the Oshikage aquaculture activities off of Hunts Point in Pecosin. And I received notice this week from Ben Stagg that that application process is continuing. However, they have changed the location of that site from the eastern side of Hunts Point, around the point, to the side about a mile, that appears to be about north of the boat landing at the end of Hunts Neck Road. And of course, we have blue water areas where they launch canoes and so forth at the end of Hunts Neck. And so if anyone has any interest in that, or any comments pro con, be advised that that area has changed, and contact VMRC to get the details on that.
Just one follow-up question on that. I'm assuming that that starts the process again, is that correct? That VMRC themselves will advertise that change, not depend on us to, to communicate that out?
I'm not clear on that, sir, I'll find out. I'll let you know.
Thank you. Councilwoman Crawford?
I just wanted to thank everybody for being here as well. I know Will and Kyle from, since they were little, they grew up with my oldest one, and Will, I think George probably has been called Will out of his midlife, so sorry about that. And I wanted to mention to Mr. Sanders, and I think the mayor mentioned... And I wanted to mention to Mr. Sanderson, I think the mayor mentioned it a little bit, but, you know, they, in their report, it says they refer to us as having very strong leadership. And part of that is we have a very strong partnership with them, and we do have very strong partnerships with a lot of people in the city, and I bet it's part of what makes us, if it's such a strong city, we have a very strong staff, and it takes a team to get a report like this. So I'm very pleased to be part of that. Also, Marta Chapezi, I'd welcome her to the, to the board. And Mr. Andrew, thank you, but they're supposed to have great talent in our town.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
I have nothing in addition.
Good, I'm getting tired of pushing this button, so, I was hoping, but I didn't want to, I don't want to short anybody. Randy and I attended a recent breakfast at NASA Langley, with both NASA representatives and Langley there. Will, tell you how time flies, I remember when they launched Viking, I'm sorry to say. This is their 40th anniversary celebration of that mission. And so you're going to hear a lot of history coming out of NASA. They're approaching their 100th year of service. They are there, and the Air Force Base is very close behind them. I would encourage the people, you know, we have a rich history with NASA, we have a rich history with Langley. Those histories, I would not trade for the world, having grown up around them, and having our fathers and our grandfathers and everybody who worked for them. It's a time to celebrate that institution, it's a time to help them celebrate, and I hope that everybody in Pecosin will take place, take part of those celebrations and truly send our best wishes to them as they approach their 100th years. A lot of changes in NASA, but one of the things that was a big reminder to us that basically the walk to space started here, at NASA Langley. If you've forgotten your history, just think about Mercury Boulevard. Think about the names of the bridges in the local area, and you'll find the seven original astronauts all trained here, did their thing here. And what is really exciting now is that the local NASA regional base basically is focused more on space travel than aeronautics today, which is basically a change in the last 20 years, where they were kind of taking a backseat to space travel. That's reemerging as one of their strengths in the continuing missions to Mars. Paralleling that, something that we're probably all excited about is that Wallops Island will be back in business in the near future, and we'll be able to actually witness those launches from Pecosin as we did before. But that's a great sign for the Virginia economy, for the local economy. I'm looking forward to all of that. I will make mention of one thing that's going around. Many members of council, including myself, have gotten a couple of phone calls, and that is concerning retirement pay, or basically retirement benefits for our workers, especially those in public safety. I will say that generally the city is taking a calculated approach to this, because despite all the rumors on Pecosin 4011, nothing is free. There is no such thing as a free lunch. And what, the last thing that we want to do is set up a program that collapses in four years due to lack of funding, because we haven't thought it out. So, if you're looking for a quick fix from government, I would tell you to, we will be much quicker than the federal government, but we will take our time with that decision. We will make the right decision for the employees, both today and tomorrow. There's a lot of negativity out there about how slow that process is moving. I think we've had this now for about a month. That's not real slow in government's eyes. I've known federal government to take seven years on Plum Tree Island to make a simple decision, I think is where we're at now. We'll make it probably within about a quarter. So please be patient with the process, but please understand that the process is to make sure that we do the right thing, not for the short term, but for the long term. And please be patient with that process. Other than that, what I would say is we have a motion, we need to take a motion to go into closed session. The closed session this evening is to interview candidates for school board offices, so no secret about what we're doing, but just wanted the public to know, as we go into closed session, what that's about. So I'll take a motion on that now.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we convene a closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-371181 of the Code of Virginia, as amended to discuss personnel matters, i.e. school board candidate interviews.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, that we go into closed session. Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aha.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, and we are in closed session, so, thank you very much. Okay, we're back from our closed session, and I'll ask for a motion from council that we certify that closed session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we certify our closed session and that we talked about only what we convened the closed session to talk about.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, questions or comments? None, Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven.
Okay, thank you very much. And a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Wait a minute, ah, the thing was flashing, I'm sorry.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aha.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Motion carried by...
Thank you very much, and we are adjourned.
Well, thank you, thank you very much for being here tonight.